Get going, Mr. Cruz.
I'm sorry.
Are you ready to get started? Okay, perfect. Then let's go ahead and get started and I will call this special meeting to order. This special board meeting of the Board of Education for May 4th, 2023 is called the order. Welcome, Mr. Cruz. Purpose of tonight's meeting is to consider two formal complaints. Complaints numbers 2023 dash 03 and 2023 dash 04. While we don't think it is likely for these complaints for this to occur if during the meeting issues pertaining to confidential student records arise, we will leave it in the executive session after first addressing the public media complaints that do not pertain to confidential student records. If that happens following the executive session, we return to a public meeting. You don't anticipate that tonight, but just in case. Come up. For each one of these complaints tonight, you will have five minutes to provide your comments to the board and the staff. Following those comments, board members may follow up with questions for you or for staff. And I think we're going to start with complaint number 2023 dash 03, which is the one regarding the complaint process. And a little more specifically, the this complaint from October 17th, 2023 concerns the district's statement and decision to not process certain submissions by U N A reform complaint policy. Specifically, your complaint about the language stated that in the September 26th, 2022 district correspondence. I'm sorry, there's a typo here in the script. But your complaint about that language, it was substantiated in step one response and the district apologized for the erroneous statement that was made as part of that response. Your complaint about the interpretation of the submission dated September 6th, 2023 as a public records request was unsubstantiated in step one response and this field pertains all of that issue. That was a somewhat confusing summary, so I think we will probably go back and actually as part of your statement, we may make it. But again, I think there were as part of this complaint about complaints, there was a part that was substantiated and then there's a part that was not been substantiated. So I think the erroneous statement that the complaint process, correct me if I'm right about this, Liz, the complaint process only deals with Division 22 issues. And then you came back and said, that's not true. I believe the district.
Yeah, Mary, do you want to?
The first part of it was we had, we had originally taken the, the, the request for information as exactly that.
No, this is a statement that your complaint does not fall within Division 22.
Oh, that's correct. That was the. That was substantiated. And I think in the response from Mr. Garcia, who apologized for making that, for that error.
The part that was unsubstantiated was the interpretation of the, of the submission as a public records request and whether that was reasonable or not. That was substantiated, that was not substantiated at the step one response. And that's what's supposed to be what we're today.
That makes sense.
So, sorry, I want to.
The part about the district interpreted your first submission to be a public records request and, and compared to you and you said, that's not, that's not what it is. And that the language that was used was interpreted by Mr. Garcia at step one response to be a reasonable interpretation. I think you have submitted it since then, as I understand, but the, your appeal is a conclusion that that was a reasonable interpretation by the district that it was a public records request more than a complaint. And I don't want to mischaracterize.
Right, yeah. So even though I said that it was a complaint, it was still based off the interpretation of.
The step, the step one, the conclusion reached was that it was a reasonable interpretation, that it was a request for record, not a complaint. And I, I don't want to, I'm not here to debate you on your complaint. I want you to put it in your own words and explain.
No, I just wanted to make it clear for, for the public that even though I said that it was a complaint, but we're here today based off the interpretation, right?
That was the decision made by the step one response from Mr. Garcia.
So with that, you have five minutes to talk about this complaint.
So, so with that, I mean, that's, that's a great segue. This will be officially my last complaint. I would advocate for it for students in a way different capacity than this. I come to the conclusion that, you know, this is a check in the box school district. Some disrespect, this experience, as you can see, the experience of the different complaints. And I'll just come to the notion, you know, that the, I thought the complaint process was for the public to kind of recognize what's happening on the ground and then to inform the district of, hey, this is what's happening on the ground. But if the district is not responding, I thought it was our right to go to the board like, hey, board, X, Y, and Z is not happening. This is what's happening on the ground. But I believe your policy, once you put the complaint in, you're not able to talk to, excuse me, board members, is that correct? Once you put the complaint in, you're not able to talk to board members?
That the person that complains is not able to talk to board members? I mean, I think as a, I'm not sure about, I don't know if this is a legal question or not. I know as a general practice, we see the complaint process as some sort of a quasi-judicial process. There are questions that are being raised by a complainant about whether the district's in compliance or out of compliance with Division 22 or other policies and procedures and, and the board is going to.
So I don't know, maybe Julie.
Actually, yeah, actually, the policy says that board members can't initiate communication with a complainant on the topic of the complaint while it's before the board. That's just from the top of my, my memory, but it's not that, it's not that you, that the complainant, the complainant can continue to communicate. It's just board, the, our policy prohibits board members from engaging or initiating contact with a complainant on the topic of their complaint. And Liz, you can correct me if I've got it wrong from the top of my head.
That's the general gist.
Thanks, Director.
Thank you. So, so to me, I mean, that, you know, that doesn't really make sense if, if I have a complaint, I'm trying to engage as a public member and the board is representing the public. So it becomes a bit bureaucracy. So now bureaucrats, you know, they run the district. So it's not a democracy anymore. Now it becomes bureaucracy. So that's the experience. Excuse me. So, you know, to be honest, you know, I feel like it's been a quite a disrespectful experience. You know, I stand before you as a black teacher, I work to say 1% in the country, have over 10 years' experience in the classroom, no smell of my name, been a very effective teacher, you can ask all my students. And I have a track record of, you know, effective teaching. So logically, I would think, I would want to engage with someone that has that type of experience and background and knowledge. I wouldn't look at them as a threat. I wouldn't look at them as, oh my goodness, like, you know, he's coming into the room to, to make my job harder. I'm trying to come into the room to, if we're in this together, like, let's try to, to bring our kids up together. Like, I'm, I'm trying to let you know, like, here's what's happening on the ground, here's what's happening in the experience of my, of my children, what can we do to fix this? Like, that shouldn't be a, a enemy type of, of connotation. That shouldn't be like, oh, let's collaborate and let's see what's going on so we can try to fix this together. So when I say, I wasn't calling you a racist, I'm saying that you're sustaining a racist system that's different. So it's not personal, right? So what's personal is my experience of what's actually happening and then I'm explaining to you what's happening and it's being ignored. And then I have to go to a complaint and then I'm not able to talk to the board to engage and talk to the, to the staff because they're looking at me as, as an enemy and not as a collaborator. So it's just, it's, it's just not logical to me. It doesn't make sense. Especially if, if we're all in this to try to, you know, to, to help kids. So now as a parent, so if I, if I see an individual community member who has that type of experience, who's, who's very rare, and then they also have the parent experience, like, to me, I would want to, like, consult with that person. So, I mean, this experience has, has, it's been quite disrespectful. My first complaint, that, you know, I don't know if Amy is on the line and Julia, was when I was, my daughter was in the second grade and I was like, I wanted to promote my daughter to be tag. At this time, I don't know if you guys know, second grade is the perfect time to engage and to nominate kids because you don't have to be stuck in a standardized testing. So once you hit third grade, you're not nominated for tag unless you are in the high numbers of the standardized test. So again, that's falling into a racist system. So now I have to pass a standardized test to be considered a tag. So when my daughter was in the seventh grade and I wasn't able to get the alternative testing, so I put in the different complaint and then that was ignored. The second time is when I informed you of the lack of the curriculum alignment. And I'm telling you, I'm clearly telling you on the ground, my kids, the learning targets are not lining up to once of being assessed in math. So if, if the teacher is teaching X, Y, and Z, but math is assessing X, Y, and Z, that has not been tied, then math is, is useless. Like, it's not, it's not, it's not, it's pointless. So if I'm explaining that to you, that's not like a, a critique. It's, it's an actual fact. I'm telling you, like, what's actually happening. I'm giving you evidence of what's happening. That's not a critique. I'm telling you, like, hey, this is, this is what's happening, let's try to fix this. So now we get to this point. And then when I brought up the educational profiles and plans, I brought up to you, I gave you the facts that we don't have a profile. And it said clearly in Division 22 that we're supposed to have educational profiles and plans. Yes, we did have a plan and you voted for that, excuse me.
Just we're, we're a little bit off the facts, so.
Yeah, yeah.
On this complaint and we'll have another for the second.
So, so, so when I brought that before you, so, you know, you guys all voted, you know, five to two to say that, you know, we didn't have a profile, but I clearly told you that we didn't have a profile. So now I had to go through another process and now O D E is going to investigate P P S because you guys don't have profiles. Like, and I was like, could, we're trying to tell you that we don't. Instead of like having a corrective plan of action to try to fix it, now we have to go through all these different hoops and, and, and all these different processes. So now it's, it's a bureaucracy. So now we, we're here to this point of the first complaint and this is all based off interpretation. So again, it's sort of the collaboration and I'm clearly telling you that, no, this is a complaint, but it's ignored because, no, because you wrote on your email and I'm interpreting the email as this. Like, why?
Thanks, Mr. Cruz. We'll have a chance if board members have, have questions for you as we go through this process. Superintendent, do you or staff, you want to talk about this complaint or have any questions and share with the board?
I don't have any comment this time. Chief of Staff Garcia, you drafted correspondence, did you want to add anything?
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. So I think I want to provide a little bit of clarity. On September 6th, Mr. Cruz did send us, or the complaint coordinator an email. Specifically, he, and I quote, said, "need HTMS data and how the standards are in alignment to achievement via GPA, MAP assessment, attendance, discipline referrals, incident reports, and reading, writing, and math performance and ability," unquote. So again, we, when we read that, we interpreted that as a public records request at the time. And so because of this complaint, as, as we shared in the communication to Mr. Cruz, we did take steps to further clarify our formal complaint process. So this includes proposing minor revisions to the policy to clarify what complaint, what complaints it addresses. And that's, I believe, in front of you at some point here. The second thing we've done is updated our conflicts resolution page with a unified complaint form that captures all complaints and makes it clear how non-Division 22 complaints are managed. So again, providing more clarity to complainants about how the complaint process works.
At this point, we'll open it up for board questions, either to Mr. Cruz or to staff. And again, we're talking about the first of the two complaints tonight, this one about this specific request that was made. Are there questions from board members?
So I just have a general question, like, kind of about process when something comes in. So in this case, staff made an interpretation based on reading what the request was and something like that, when somebody says it's a complaint and then it may be interpreted by staff as something different, do we ever call individuals to just ask, like, you, you say it's a complaint, but to us, it looks like a public records and just to clarify it? Or does it just go into the process and you get the, it goes into the formal process and you get the formalized response? Because that seems a little bit, what, what happened here is like, something came in and an interpretation, but maybe if there'd been a conversation about it, it may have been, we may not be here. So I'm just curious about what the process is.
We, we often, we, we, when it's not clear, when we receive, as you know, we receive complaints through a number of different avenues and sometimes they're not, they, they, what appear to, to be complaints are, are different things. And in this case, we interpreted your, as, as noted, this as a public records request because of the nature of the, the items that Mr. Cruz was asking for. In this case, the complaint coordinator responded to Mr. Cruz and said, "We have read this and believe it's, you're, you are requesting public records. I'm referring you to the public records officer." Who then reached out to Mr. Cruz and said, "It is my understanding you are looking for these records. Please confirm with me that these are the records you're looking for." I believe there was confirmation and we provided those records for Mr. Cruz. And so there was an engagement both with the complaint coordinator and with the public records officer. I don't know if it was by telephone, but I know there, there was email correspondence with both.
Wait, who?
You had, you had, you received.
Did you say that?
The complaint coordinator and the public records officer who provided the documents to you.
I don't think, I don't, that's not really answering the question because I clearly told you guys that it was a complaint, it wasn't a public request, but that was ignored.
What, so I can speak to that. So once the complaint was, so once this process was, was done and, and Mr. Cruz received the, the information, he then did complain, which is the, the next complaint that you actually have in front of you.
So I think to end, I think it did answer Director Brumman's question though, which is that there was communication and conversation, the records were provided, and then Mr. Cruz, you then submitted a complaint about that process. Is that, is that accurate?
Hey, before we move on, I just want to generally address some of your comments, Mr. Cruz, because I, I understand how frustrating this process feels and I think that you have engaged in this process with a really genuine intent, intent to improve the system and to address issues that you're seeing through your own kids' experience and through your, you know, lens as a teacher, looking at what's going on in our schools. So I, I totally get how frustrating it feels for you that it can seem like a reflexive response to just kind of dismiss the concerns. And I think part of that is just the nature of the structure of the complaint process. And it's, I'll speak from my own experience, it's really frustrating on our side too because what we're asked to do is make a determination based on really clear-cut guidelines from O D E on Division 22 and that's not satisfying. That doesn't, that doesn't provide a forum to really address the meat of the issues that come forward. And it doesn't mean that we don't make progress sometimes, that through the complaint process, issues are revealed that, you know, allow us to then kind of change our systems or change our protocols or whatever. But I just want to say that I hear your frustration and I appreciate your very sincere attempt to want to make progress. And it sounds like you're kind of giving up and that makes me sad, but I, I don't fault you.
So Directors, I just want to.
Yeah, just.
There's also been a check by staff at various levels of the organization who have sat down with Mr. Cruz and have made themselves available as well. Hopefully, you know, his experience has been that they have made some time to sit down with, with Mr. Cruz as well and try to understand.
So why would you, if I'm telling you my experience, then why would you say that? Like, why would you just undermine my experience?
I'm just acknowledging that leaders have made an attempt to try and listen, to try to understand. Yeah, Mr. Cruz, I, I mean, I think we're, the point of this process is to put everything on the table. I was going to say something similar to Director Constan. I mean, I, and you and I have had some of these conversations as well. This, our judicial system, right, in this country is, is intentionally adversarial, right? It is, it is not set up as a place to collaborate to, it is set up as a system, whether it's civil or criminal, to get to a decision, right? It's a decision, guilty, not guilty. It's, it's, you know, it's intentionally adversarial. This, this process is, is set up as, as an intentionally adversarial process, but someone comes in and says there's a complaint, the district investigates, it's either substantiated, in which case then, you know, it's substantiated, we make the changes, or it's not substantiated and, and, and the complainant can choose to appeal. You can appeal to the board. The only decision the board can make is to either uphold the, the findings of the staff or to, to not uphold the findings of the staff. And then, and then at that point, you know, you can also appeal that to O D E, which I know you're in the process of doing. It is not a process for collaboration, for conversation, for problem solving. And, and, and that, I think that can be frustrating. And I think that one of the things that, you know, I would love to explore is how do we create more of those spaces? Because I'll agree with everything Director Constan said and, you know, from our very first conversation four years ago, you, you, you are, you know, incredibly dedicated to helping improve this district. And it's what makes this process very unsatisfying for me because in this process, we don't get the ability to sort of say, let's sit down and figure out a way to improve the district. It is truly, you raised an issue, are we in compliance or are we not? And we have to, to vote, to make a decision, are we in compliance or are we not? So, you know, when I hear you say, you said it's a complaint, staff are saying it, it looks like a public records request and that's frustrating to you. But I also think that's staff's role. And when you say your experience has been very frustrating, I, I hear that and I understand that. When the superintendent says he's made staff available to you as far as this process, that is also true. And I think you, you, you know, I mean, I, I assume you would acknowledge that staff had that when you had those conversations. That may not be the outcome you want, but, but that's also a reality that I think is important to acknowledge. And I think as part of this process, we're trying to get all of that, all of that on the table. So I don't think it's intended to undermine you, I think it's intended to say there's been lots of efforts. And, and outside of this complaint process, I, I hope we can have more conversations about ways to improve the district and, and ways to do this thing right. And again, I don't want to take away, you have every right, as does every parent, to continue to file complaints if, if you see violations. Is there something more you want to say to the staff?
Okay, I appreciated, you know, Superintendent, in you stating that people sat down with me and we had conversations. What does that have to do with you? To you? Like, what is, what is your point? Like, what, what is, what is that? How does that relate to everything that I said earlier in my beginning statements? How, how does it relate to that? How does it relate to if my intentions are trying to, to change what's on the ground and what's happening and then I'm explaining to you X, Y, and Z, but that's being ignored? Like, explain to me, like, why would you say that if I, if I, that is a beginning statement? But you don't think that's undermining, like?
Well, I, I think it basically.
Do you understand what I'm telling you, what I'm feeling?
Well, I, I think what you feel is very important. What staff and actions are being taken is also very important. So when I hear you say that you.
Let me take away the feel.
I was going to answer the question.
It's not, it's not feel, okay? It's, it's not, it's, it's the experience, okay? Let me just get to the actual. So if I'm telling you it's the actual, it's not a feel.
So you, you, you said that you didn't feel heard in this process. The superintendent was saying that he's made staff available who have sat down and talked to you and listened to you. So I think it is relevant. You're saying, you, but, I mean, Mr. Cruz, I guess I would ask, is, is your experience the only one that matters or is the experience of staff who have interacted and talked to you also important as part of this process?
I think what, what matters is the issues that I'm bringing up that, that got ignored. I think that's, that's the issue. But then you're saying that, you know, people sat down with me, but that doesn't say anything. That's not saying anything.
So, so.
But when I'm sitting down with you, like, like, and, and the people who sat down with me, that's, that's something totally different. Like, business is business. If I'm sitting down talking about something outside of the complaint, that's something totally, totally different. You understand what I'm saying?
Well, yes, I mean, and, and again, it kind of was reinforcing my point, the complaint process isn't only about the complaint. So to the extent we're talking about larger issues about systemic improvement in the district, those, those conversations don't happen here, they happen in those other, other spaces. Director Anderson, do you want to?
I was just going to, you know, acknowledge that I'm one of the staff members that have met with Mr. Cruz. One of these two occasions, I met with him with Dr. Proctor about assessment, Dr. Armstrong and I met with him just a few weeks ago. And we talked about some things learned in the district, we had some casual conversation as well. And I did, we did talk about whether or not this process will lead to district improvement. And Mr. Cruz did offer himself as someone who might be able to help and input. And Dr., and he had some questions about some things and Dr. Armstrong said, let us get back to you on that. And we had responded in some ways to that experience, but I, I do think, I can't take credit or blame for anything that happened before I came to you. But I can say since in my time here, I've made myself available to Mr. Cruz, to talk to him, and I've corresponded with him over emails several times.
Are there additional questions from the board before we move to vote on this first complaint?
Yeah, I have something I want to say, but I'm walking out the door right now.
Perfect timing for your questions, Director Brumman. Anywhere, anywhere?
I wanted to just say that I'm, just to acknowledge your experience, but I, I guess I look at this first complaint as, actually think you prevailed on both points. You were correct on the fact that this wasn't, shouldn't have been denied because it wasn't a Division 22 issue. And on the second point, you received the records that you asked for. So in some ways, I look at this as we're, however we vote, the end result is on both issues that you demonstrated in the first point, but the district, correcting the district, correcting the district response on the second point, you got the records. So I, I see this as an affirmation of what you asked for in your original point, so I, I don't see it as a, I wouldn't take this as the district was in an adversarial point of view. We acknowledge that the original response was in the form of. And I wouldn't give up because you are making, you are making a difference in the system.
No, I appreciate it. But the only way that happened was I had to include you in the email and then you had to respond. But if you wouldn't have done that, what do you think would have happened?
I hope we would have backed the same opinion. I, I.
Yeah, I know, I, I appreciate, you know, you acknowledging and, letting me know, like, like Amy said, like, the intention is to, to better the system, okay? This, this, I'm, I'm not an adversary. If you, if you want to correct and better the system, don't look at me as an adversary. Look at it as, okay, this is how, what, what needs to be done and how we can better the system. So I appreciate you acknowledging, okay, the fact that we corrected the point of the district telling me that I cannot complain about this particular complaint because it, it doesn't fall in Division 22. But I'm afraid of the other parents. First of all, you got to represent, you got to understand, you're not going to have another parent like this, you're not going to have another person sitting up here letting you guys know about the system. I'm letting you know that right now, okay? This is, this is, this is the last. I'm letting you know that right now, okay? This is this is this is the last of the of it, okay? Um, so so if if I'm afraid of the other parents that don't understand and understand this system operates. And they continue to be taken advantage of. Uh, they don't understand that, okay, if I email the board and then the board can respond to the, uh, to the staff and then the staff will respond. But as a public member, I can't get the staff to respond. Um, I'm afraid that other parents, other community members don't know about that process. And we don't understand the system how it operates, so they're gonna continue to be taken advantage of. So in this situation, this this first complaint is very important. I hope you guys are really looking at it because it's really based off of interpretation. You said, um, the district engaged, but the engagement should have stopped right there. If I totally, if I clearly stated and said that it was a complaint and not a public request, it shouldn't have just stopped there and it should have been honored as a complaint. Like, it shouldn't be based off a a text interpretation, you know what I mean? So that's where it becomes more black and white. When you you're looking at, could he interpret the email as such, you know, I told him
Can I ask you, can I ask you why, can I ask you why staff should have no when I'm hearing you say staff should have no discretion, when somebody comes in, if a parent says it's a complaint, it's automatically a complaint, no matter what's in it? Is that your position?
Excellent. Wait, you provide your
What I'm hearing you saying is if a parent emails something in and says this is a complaint, that we will absolutely treat it as a complaint no matter what because that's that's what they want it to be. And and I guess what I'm hearing is we get parents who say this is a complaint. Sometimes it's a complaint, sometimes it's other things. It seems reasonable to me that staff would get that and interpret it and then move forward for you.
That's your interpretation.
But I'm I'm asking you, I'm asking you in in this large bureaucracy of the district, do you believe that anytime a parent says it's a complaint, no matter what it's about, we we treat it as formal, part of our formal complaint process?
I mean, that's that's, I mean, I'm not in the position of power. I mean, you are in the position of power.
No, but I'm asking you your, you're, that's what I hear you say.
I'm going by what I, my experience and I'm staying in this context. I'm not a horn outside. That's that's up to you. And this is all based off, again, your
I want to move to a vote. And I will just say that I think it's reasonable, uh, you know, for 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 staff to to take things in and 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 whether a a a community member says it's a complaint or not, to sort of to sort of look at that and make a reasonable assumption. I'll say, I think this is reasonable. I also want to say I don't see, but I have never seen you as an adversary um, to us as a district. I see you as an ally and someone who is helping to make positive change. I hope we can continue to have conversations about that. Um, I want to move to a vote because we've got another complaint to go on. So, um, unless there's any last board comments. The board will now vote on the appeal of the superintendent's step one decision for complaint two zero two three dash zero three as it relates to the September sixth, two thousand twenty-two submission. All those in favor of affirming the superintendent's step one decision that the interpretation of Mr. Cruz's submission from September sixth, two thousand twenty-two, that it was a public records request and not a complaint, was reasonable. So Do you want me to repeat that again, Director?
No, I'm just, my question is like there were two parts to it and were
The first part was already affirmed, so we're not voting on that. So this is the
So, because it was affirmed by, I'm sorry, just on those remarks, because it was affirmed by
By staff.
Staff, okay.
Correct, right.
So
So the only thing we're voting on tonight, so that was affirmed, the complaint was affirmed. What we're voting on tonight was that the interpretation, um, of the submission as a public records request and not a complaint was reasonable.
Um, John, I I had a read, like, so even though we realize that it wasn't a public request, it becomes, it kind of ended up being a complaint. We're voting on, is the interpretation was okay for it to be a complaint versus, um,
Well, right, we determined that it was a public records request, treated it as such, provided the public records. Even when we found out it was. Well, our interpretation is that it, after we found out it wasn't.
Correct, Vice Chair Hollins, after it was, after he received the information that he requested, he then asked for, he did submit a formal, a formal complaint, which is the next item that you have in front of you. So ultimately, Mr. Cruz is getting what he asked for, which is a complaint. The complaint process, which is the next item that you you will be voting on.
We're voting on the interpretation that we treated it as a public request. And we're saying that we affirm that that interpretation is okay, or should be. That interpretation even if we find out, well, who found out? Basically overturned it as far as it
No. So I want to make sure we're really clear. There were, there were two parts to this complaint. One, and 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 our initial response to Mr. Cruz said that this was not a complaint because it didn't deal with Division twenty-two.
Correct, I remember that.
And that was an incorrect statement because complaints don't need to deal with Division twenty-two. Um, and that was at the step one, was we determined that that was an incorrect statement. And that part of his, of 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 that, of the complaint was affirmed. So that's not on the table because it's stupid stuff.
Those are the things that happen. We don't have the actual
I guess I'm trying to understand, so this, the one, the stuff we're talking about now, is a separate complaint? Or is part of that saying first complaint?
First complaint had two parts. So maybe part one A was affirmed and part one B is what we want.
Not to say it was reasonable to treat it as a, a real complaint.
Good answer, quick question. Um, you had asked, you know, um, should staff just interpret everything as a complaint? Um, I think the important thing to look at, uh, within this system is that, is there any oversight, um, when staff interprets a, something is a complaint or not? Um, is there any, what is the process of that oversight of, okay, this person is interpreting, is there somebody else that can, is there? You know what I'm saying? Like, like Yeah.
Well, I, I, sorry, I didn't catch on.
Go ahead.
I think that's what we're here today, right? So staff interpreted it as a public records request, you said it's a complaint. And and in fact, this this is the accountability for the board to either say that initial, um, that initial interpretation was reasonable, that it was a public records request, or we can vote that it was not reasonable and it shouldn't be treated as a complaint.
I actually am not seeing it in our packet that actually, the, is it, um, to what the actual
And you're looking for the actual, the original complaint?
I'm just trying to decide, um.
It was provided to us previously. I'm not sure it was in board book today. And I'll defer to our counsel.
My, to, to address, my regulation was, you made a statement that there I don't know, you know, the overall, like, whether that there weren't outcomes, um.
That's a necessary
That's the next, yeah, but that, but the information you were asking for was
I understand what she's saying. The, she's
Director Bren Edwards, I have it on screen for anybody that wants to look at it.
We may need to make that larger. Can you just read it? Quite a bit larger.
Yes, I can read it. Uh, the specific area that we're talking about says need HTMS data and how the standards are in alignment to achievement via GPA, MAP of assessment, attendance, discipline referrals, incidents, and reports and reading, writing, and math performance ability.
And typically, we will receive language like that be treated as a public
Thanks.
Ten times harder.
Information. So this, no CFPs, which probably just makes the district not in compliance, is that, is that
Sorry, Director Bren Edwards, I'm not sure I follow your question.
We're trying to figure out, is there someplace in here where he, it seems like he specifically saying this is a complaint or this is how I would like this to be treated?
So do you remember the, um, the community meeting that Tubman said they did would never happen?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so that, in that community meeting, those things were supposed to be, um, viewed. So my complaint was, there's no evidence of X, Y, and Z because it wasn't presented. Um, and then there's no, um, so when I initially requested it from the ground level, they didn't have the information, so I just went up the levels following me. And then, um, that meeting never happened. And then, so that's the complaint.
So I'm, I may, I'm wondering how, as someone who sometimes has to interpret complaints, how it would be the staff would interpret something as complaint that doesn't say it's a complaint?
Right. Well, but he's
Doesn't explicitly say that in the email.
Right.
That's, that's what we receive. We receive the email. We don't often know what's happened outside of the process of actually receiving the correspondence.
Hopefully, it's clear on our complaint form that, you know, we give guidelines to people about the intake of complaints so that we can try to avoid that problem in the first place.
But in the exact situation, it was sent to the complaint coordinator. And the complaint coordinator looked at it and said, it looks like a public records request. Sent it into our
Sent a message to Mr. Cruz saying that we believe this is a public records request. And we will forward this in, this request to the public records officer, who then reached out to Mr. Cruz and said, I received a public records request. I am documenting the items that you are looking for and then provide those to you.
Is that the same Email, are you gonna tell them the email that I responded to you that that it looks like a complaint?
I don't have that. And that came, uh, I think that, I don't know, I'm telling you that in the, this period of time
The original
The original period of time that it came, then a later, later said, I want this to be as a complaint. And then we did.
But it went to the complaint coordinator. I mean, I I think if somebody files something with a complaint coordinator, it seems like
So I want to be clear, I want to be, make sure, uh, there's clarity here. So again, this this email's in, this email was referencing September sixth. And on October seventeen, uh, he did file a formal complaint, uh, on this, and on this topic. This is around the same time he did file the complaint around, that is in front of you, right after this this vote. So I want to be clear, we're, we're, you all have the complaint about not, which they're, the, the, Mr. Cruz's intended complaint is in front of you following this vote.
Director Bren Edwards, you were bringing up an issue that I was trying to bring up earlier and we may have a disagreement on this. I think if if I, as a parent, were to submit to the complaint coordinator and say, you know, I would like to see MAPS data, um, for last year's third grade class, um, because I said that the complaint coordinator does not in my mind make it a complaint. And I think the complaint coordinator would then say, oh, okay, well, that's a public records request with Dr. Evans's team. I would get that data back. Um, and I think this is, this is, this, I mean, honestly, this is part of the conversation is, is it reasonable for staff um, to look at these things and interpret them as 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 public records and deal with them as such? And I think if we uphold the findings, we're saying it is reasonable. If we don't, we're saying it's not. And I think if we follow that latter course, then we as a board need to then give some direction. Maybe that direction, the majority of the board wants it, is that everything that goes to the complaint coordinator is automatically part of this process. Although I, I will just say, I think that means people don't get the public records requested. It sounds like that, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I guess I would like to see some more nuance in this. In addition to requesting information, it is me, the statement that it's me, my, my, um, but what doesn't look like there's evidence that something happened? And again, I'm trying to think of all the parents who don't have a lot of experience with GPS is, um, it's, it seems again, since we don't want it to be an adversarial process, this doesn't seem like a complaint, it seems like X. And then if the person still insists it's a complaint, like, why, why is that? Again, just trying to get it out of like this more formal process, which we've said we want actually a kind of, well, plans, um, to resolve things in a way that works for us. And so it just seems to me that that
Am I missing a piece? So didn't that happen here? So you submitted it, staff went back and said, it doesn't look like a complaint, it looks like a public records request, submitted the public records. He came back and said, it's a complaint, and then that complaint was filed and we're about to hear that.
Well, you said it was a complaint.
But it sounds like what you just described is what happened in this unless I misunderstood.
She's more so talking about, I think you really need to look at the the process. Like, if if the process, if I directly went to the complaint coordinator, if I want a public request, I would go to the public request and get a public request. So I think what she's saying is that if it's directly to and stating that I'm saying this is a complaint, that now it goes back to the interpretation. Where's the oversight of the interpretation?
I'd just like to add, um, Chair Scott, that we receive a variety of communications through a variety of platforms. I'm thinking about our Let's Talk platform. And we get state of public information requests through that platform. We get, um, complaints about staff through that platform. We sometimes get, it's what breeds like a formal complaint. And so again, without the ability to discern and make judgment calls on what the substance of a message is, irrespective of where it was sent. It would be interesting to me, allow how we would move with it.
Mr. Cruz, after you were told that it looked like a public records request and it was not a complaint, and you went back and said it is a complaint and then got that filed, is that, was that not a
I just revise, I had to, so it's like, why do I have to go through all those hoops?
But it was that not, I mean, I guess what I'm asking, is that not a satisfactory outcome that it did become a complaint after after checking back in with you and providing with the records?
That's not the point. I mean, it's that, it's
Trust me, yeah.
I'm more so looking at the the structure and the process because, you know, this could happen to somebody else. That's, that's what how I'm trying to speak. Yeah, we're, we're here now, like, you know. I don't, I'm, I'm not really attached to this anymore, to be honest with you. I'm not emotionally, I don't really care.
Okay, I'm just gonna say again, it seems to me like exactly what Director Bren Edwards asked for and what you've asked for and what we all want to see is exactly what happened. That somebody came in, there was communication with the person who filed it to figure out exactly what it was. Information was provided. When you said, no, 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 it's not just about information, it's about a complaint, the complaint was processed and that's what we're here. So that's why I'm gonna vote to uphold it because it seems like the process worked the way people are saying it should work. And I'm struggling to to hear how it did.
I mean, that's your, that's your interpretation, that's your interpretation.
Anything else before we vote on this? Okay, all those in favor of affirming the superintendent's step one decision that the interpretation of Mr. Cruz's submission dated September sixth, two thousand twenty-two, was a public records, that it was a public records request and not a complaint, was reasonable, please indicate by saying yes?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
I'll oppose, please indicate by saying no. Okay, I only heard three votes. Um, I guess are there abstentions?
I'm gonna stay about, let me, the rest, the, give another conversation.
Okay, so right now, the superintendent's decision, oh, this, the motion
I'll, I'll vote to uphold it.
Okay.
And, you know, I hope you all, um, I'm, I'm trying to say it, but just all the appearance because it can feel, it can feel like an adversarial process. I appreciate what you're saying, Andrew, that it's not, that it feels adversarial and
The superintendent's decision is affirmed by a vote of four to zero with one abstention. Karen, did you get, you don't have? Um, next up, and we are already at five o'clock, we have a, an executive session we need to go to around bargaining and a council session that starts at six. So I'm not trying to shortchange the process, just letting everyone know where we are on our schedule. We will consider complaint number two zero two three dash zero four. On January twenty-seventh, uh, Mr. Cruz initiated a formal complaint concerning the racial equity and social justice office's reporting of outcomes under contracts with community-based organizations providing services to Harriet Tubman Middle School. Um, and that complaint was found to be unsubstantiated in the step one response, which I hope all the board members pad it on. Uh, Mr. Cruz, again, you'll have five minutes to
So, um, again, uh, the point of this complaint was I was excited to see, um, the outcomes on the website. Um, so the outcomes are listed in, in the complaint. And I was like, wow, you know, this, this would be great to see, um, some of the results of this, um, from the community organizations on the ground. And this is during the time where kids were walking out protesting. And I'm like, man, where are all these community organizations, um, at the time where all these kids are walking out? So I'm So I'm more so like from the outside looking in, I'm like, what, what the heck is going on? Um, so asking questions and like, and it led me to, to, um, to explore the website, and I saw these great outcomes, and I was looking for the outcomes, and I didn't see the outcomes. So I think there's a misinterpretation of my complaint because it said that, um, I didn't see the, the outcomes in the, um, in the contract. Um, no, that wasn't the complaint because there were outcomes in the, in the contract, but the outcomes did not align with what I saw on the website. But, um, they just clearly explained to me just in the file that was just sent a few days ago that, um, well, that was just a draft.
And there, and there weren't outcomes, they were metrics, they were desired outcomes, right?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, um, but that's not the point, but let's, um, so, so I was looking for those, those outcomes. I didn't, I didn't see the outcome in the, um, when I was requesting for them. So, um, that was the complaint. But it looks like what you are voting on is not what I was complaining about. You're voting on if there's outcomes in the contract. And, and yeah, there's outcomes in the contract. Um, I was more so looking for what was, I guess, what you guys just stated to me now was a draft. I didn't know, if you would've told me that was a draft a long time ago, I, I, cool, it's a draft. I would've been, I would've moved on, but, um, but I just found out it was a draft like two days ago, you know, saw the summary.
It's a little concerning that it's been a draft.
Take away from this time. There'll be time for questions in a second.
So, um, yeah, so, so again, what you're voting on is not really related to the point, so, I mean, if you vote, you should go ahead and just vote and you don't have to waste any time.
Okay. I just wanna make sure, are you done, Mr. Cruz?
Yes.
Okay, great. Open for board questions.
All right.
So I'm just, so the stuff that came out was having this draft. Is that, is the draft of those considered outcomes, or is that a draft to continue to work on what the outcomes are? Because they're just like, when I do it, like for instance, a draft with business plan, that's not the business plan. It can be changed, it can be moved, it can do all that stuff. So that wouldn't necessarily be the outcome. That's just a suggestion, and that's why it's a draft. Um, and if he's at, if it'll look as a complaint as far as if there are outcomes posted, I wouldn't consider a draft the outcome. And that's why I just want to kind of confuse that over there.
So, um, I can respond if you'd like, the, um, so what he's referring to is the, the framework document that sort of uh, laid out what we would do for the RFP, the Request for Proposals, we needed to redesign these, of these contracts. Um, this happened in May of two thousand twenty. And so since then, we revised our board goals a few times. We've also adopted our strategic plan. And so this document was in advance of all of the district live work that was, uh, going on. And at the same time, uh, we didn't, uh, sort of like land on a set of overarching, sort of like evaluative, evaluative outcomes over time because there were so many, um, complicating factors going on in a way to be able to measure long-term outcomes. We wanted to wait until after the, after the end of the pandemic so that we could have a baseline that was more based on sort of like situation as normal as could be, and then sort of move into that. So it was drafted as a draft, and in the contract language itself, we still are able to, we still are collecting data that can help, uh, Bernard and his team uh, begin to think about like, you know, what is the overall long-term impact on this? And so I think the, the complaint sort of is looking for, you know, what are, what are, what's the outcome? What's the impact of these, uh, contracts? We don't have a long-term outcome that's been determined yet because of those complicating factors. But we do have, uh, long, you know, sort of data over three years that can help us form, uh, a better understanding of the impact. We're specifically looking for those outputs that are being collected because what the literature suggests that done to fidelity, if we, if we look at the diversity of the staff providing it and the, um, sort of like the level of intensity that we measure by hours, that that's a, that's a good way to measure in the interim.
So yes, I understand how data works and how those are mostly inputs, you know, as far as the data piece. So, yeah, it's great to have all the inputs and that's, I think that's great, that helps us get to, to where the outputs are going to be. But when I, as I read the complaint here, it said, you know, work on the outcome. But we don't have an, or they are a draft form, just going by the letter of the complaint. We do not have outcomes. We have drafts. And we got a lot of inputs that goes into that, but we don't have stated outcomes yet because it's a draft form. So we have examined outcomes. We actually just shared that with our partners last month at our quarterly meeting. I'm talking about the time of this complaint.
So, yes, at the time of the application, there is a logic model that each partner presented where it does list the long-term outcomes. And so they are providing the in, the interim inputs that will allow us to measure and analyze the long-term outcomes. So in the contract, there is a set of, um, you know, we sort of, in, you can get the copy of the document right there, it was a section. And we've talked about this because Director from Edwards has brought this up a couple of times where there are both sort of like longer-term outcomes that they report out quantitatively, as well as quanti- quantifiable outputs.
And this is, I'm kind of interested in your perspective on this, Dr. Adams, because for some of these inputs, there are direct causal outcomes that would be useful for us to see, like, for example, attendance, that's pretty straightforward. For other things, it's much more complicated to make that causal connection, like what is actually causing this improvement in these measures of school climate or whatever it is, you know?
Sure, the measurement can be complicated when we're not just quantifying things into numbers and scores. Um, as I read Mr. Cruz's complaint, I focused in on this part, which was, quote, I reviewed all the contracts at Harriet Tubman Middle School. They are not reporting the outcomes listed in the contract. And as I looked at the contract, some of the things they're required to report to us are the students they serve, the families they serve, the hours that they provide. Partners give us that data every quarter. We crunch it, we meet with them, and we talk about those data four times a year.
Okay, so, so it's a little bit of a, um, semantics question here because on the one hand, we're talking about outcomes. On the other hand, we're talking about the metrics that are specified in the contracts themselves, some of which are not about outcomes or student outcomes. They're more about inputs. So the question is, are they reporting on the specific metrics that they're asking them to report on? And do we have that data? Is it, is it reasonable, is that the question that you were asking?
That's a good question.
Yeah.
And where do they give us data?
And it seems like the answer to that question is yes.
So I guess we're, the interpretation of data, right?
Right.
Interpretation of data outcome. Uh, you were on it when you were talking about the outcomes. I think, um, Director Hollis was talking about that too, referring to the outcomes that is the draft on the website that I saw. But they're referring to the contract outcomes, which is just the number of hours served and the number of kids served. So yes, um, they misinterpreted the complaint. So yeah, in the contract, those are the outcomes, so, because that's the expectation of the district, is just the number of kids served out. Um, even though the website has stated all of those other outcomes in terms of attendance, report bar data and all of that, et cetera, et cetera.
We, we just reported on attendance, GPA, discipline in our last quarterly meeting with our resident partners. We are looking at those data. We are not looking at all of these because we don't net. For example, one of the ones listed to Ms. Ledesma's point is eighth grade graduate portrait, where we know we don't have that. So we can't report on that. We don't, we know we have attendance data, we have, um, discipline data, we have referral data, we have GPA data, we have MAP data. And those are the data that we reported on and analyzed from.
So Director Hollis was saying, well, my complaint, when I was asking for that information, it got derailed to something else.
Um, then I'm, then I don't, then I, we, that was not clear in the complaint. I responded to the language that is in the complaint. I cannot make inferences about what's really being sought after.
To this, to this larger question, um, about the, the, the data, because I just wanna, I wanna make sure, I mean, what I'm, what I'm hearing, is, is table three as part of this? This, these are the, the things we are collecting. I'm sorry, I'm just. I'm sorry. Page, page seven, I, but I think these are the things we, these are the things we are collecting. I believe, if I, if I like this memory.
We, we, so we get a variety of data from the resident partners. What we do is we, this is the most, because I'm not expecting, we are not expecting our resident partner to tell us about Mary's attendance. We have Mary's attendance data, although they may have been monitoring Mary's attendance as well. So what we do get are the student names and the IDs. We match that in our data with the, we connect that with the hours of service, and then we can analyze the data that we have in alignment with these metrics, um, such as this table, I'm sorry, I'm on table five. But these are metrics that we, um, some are ones that we can collect based on different strategies and some are ones that we can't currently measure.
Yeah. Okay. And, and, and the reason why I was just asking more, more generally, what I see on this, I, I see, I see some inputs, I see some outputs, and I see some outcomes. Right? I see all of these on you, right? I mean, so for instance, number of students served is an input. Um, you know, um, you know, but, but, but again, post-secondary readiness, right? Graduation credit, those are outcomes, right? So I see, I see a mix. And am I, is it accurate? Tell me to run with this. I mean, the, the draft document we're talking about is, is an aspirational thing that we want to get to. We currently do have in the contracts certain data things. And, and I think what I heard from you, Ms. Ledesma, was that, you know, yeah, we, we are still working towards strengthening these contracts and adding even more of these. But to the, to the point of the official complaint for us today, the measures that are in the contracts are being reported.
Yes, and I would even go on to say that, the, in, in looking at our peers in the city and the county and in philanthropy, that we are, we are, we are collecting the most information. During the pandemic, most of our peers, including Moulton County, which is our sort of like next biggest funder of these organizations and, and sort of funds the SUN program. They basically asked partners to stop reporting on that data and said, we're just, we, we understand the circumstances are so nuts right now. That we're just going to ask you just to do your work and just let us know, we'll, we'll take reporting through with the invoices. And so a lot of different organizations that have very similar contracts in relation to our partners are in the same place where we are, where we're sort of like, how can we, how can we look at long-term impact while also recognizing that it's not so straightforward? I would even say some of the outcomes are, attendance aren't that straightforward given the circumstances. And what can we do to, to measure the impact? So what we're doing is, again, trying to collect the input data that is quantitated along with qualitative data. Have those quarterly meetings with our partners where we talk about like what's going well, what's not going well. How can we integrate into the district's initiatives? And, you know, how can we measure the long-term impact of that? And I think our partners are thinking very deeply about their sort of, their impact. And, you know, have, have, you know, are trying to answer those questions as well. And so I think we're just trying to do it in a collaborative way.
Yeah. So I'll just, I'll open up for other board members too. I mean, I'll just, this is what I find frustrating, and actually, Director Remmers, I actually said that our, my process is intentionally adversarial because of the way it's structured, which is what I don't like about our complaint process, because this is a perfect example to me. This is such an important question, what are outcome measures are in our resident contracts. It's a question I asked four years ago when I got on the board. You and I have had some conversations about it. Other board members have raised it as well. And some of the district staff are working towards, and I think we all agree, there are things in those contracts that are good, and there's more we can be doing. And again, we're working collaboratively. And Mr. Cruz, I think you're in the exact same place. You're looking at these and you're saying, what are the outcomes? What are we getting for this money that we're spending? And asking that same question. The complaint process today, the only question we have in front of us is, you know, are we reporting on the outcomes that are in the contracts with our resident partners? And I think you even acknowledged at the beginning, the answer to that is yes. Does that mean those are the best measures we have? Does that mean that we should do improvement? I think we can have that conversation, but it's not as part of this process. But I think there are other ways, I mean, there are other things we can do. We can send that to a committee, we can have some meetings with resident partners, there's all kinds of ways to do that. And again, I don't wanna take away, you're already doing that.
I'm, I'm just, I'm confused about the, I'm confused about the, the statement then here in the, in the stack that we have, it says, Mr. Cruz's complaint concerns tracking outcomes listed in the draft as our RSGA partnership investment strategy, which describes four sets of outcomes and measures, but was never finalized. So how can we say that we're tracking outcomes that we never got finalized? And I, I will just say, this was also part of the Secretary of State's, um, audit that asked, asked for outcomes. And we're, you know, in year two of back to we're back to home, um, not, not necessarily for our students, but, I mean, it's, it's not like we, you know, just came back two months ago from the pandemic, been in a year and a half.
Is it accurate, I don't need to, but is it accurate to say that that document was never finalized, but there are some outcome measures in these contracts?
Okay.
Well, I don't understand why that's funny.
Well, it's not, it just, it's frustrating though, because it's like, why, why wouldn't we have finalized the outcomes so that we actually?
But we, we do have some outcomes. There's just one document that wasn't finalized, but there are outcomes in these contracts. Right? And then Danny, you've expressed why.
But, but, we're, we're a year and a half away from. So, so candidly, we, the, the RFP process was, uh, indicated that contracts could be, um, renewed up to four years. And so this is the, the, the year that will be ready to updated, um, thing. And so with a solidified strategic plan, a solidified, solidified board goals and solidified vision, um, we, I feel that we can finalize this document. This is something that we were sort of like, okay. And then we also have a great deal of data around like, what can we do better? What can be different? What can be changed? And so that's, that's the, the transparent reason of why this hasn't been finalized, because to finalize it now would be, you know, um, would, would be premature, given the arc of work that's coming up in the, in the fall.
I have no confusion. I'm looking at, and maybe, maybe we can see this. So last week, the data collection, we talked about attendance. What, I guess especially, what input went into that to get the outcome? What was the desired outcome for someone? Is it tracking, or is it to see our resident partners by them being there, can this increase? Like, what is?
So each of the five strategies, right? There's like a body of literature for each of the five strategies that we fund that says they will have a certain impact on different outcomes. So for example, culturally-specific family, um, engagement is strategy one. We've done several partners to do this work with parents. And the literature, you know, people from Harvard, so smarter than me, that are at the care and maps, they said, they have, they have shown that, you know, with fidelity, when we sort of like en- engage in dual capacity building, this type of specific, uh, culturally-specific family engagement, that long-term, students will do better academically and will have higher rates of graduation. Right? So for that strategy, you know, we are leaning into, you know, those specific, uh, for, you'll notice that for each of those projects, we have like slightly different, um, strategies. Our mentoring, our positive cultural identity development, and our enrichment and extended learning are all strategies that are implemented in middle schools. And so there, uh, there's outcome measures fo- focused on, you know, ninth grade on track, eighth grade, you know, portfolio. So each of those is, is, uh, based on, you know, sort of what the district, you know, where the district was going, as well as a body of literature that talks about that. So for example, mentoring and leadership development talks about the importance of same-race mentors, right? That if students are able to, uh, engage with an adult who has this similar lived experience, they'll be, uh, better prepared for the rigor of high school. And they'll have someone who can, you know, sort of engage with them there. So the ninth grade on track, um, is something that's, that's really important as well as, you know, high school graduation.
Let me, let me, I'll be trying to break. So if I'm looking at this, what would you say? We talk about the culturally-specific family engagement piece, and you said that, uh, where, where some Harvard, apart from all this, you end up being, they should have higher acad- academic outcomes. Are we tracking those students to, to that higher academic outcomes? And where is that at?
We have the ability to. So is Dr. Adams, yeah.
So we are, yes. We, we, like I said, they give us the names and the student IDs, we put that in our system, we're tracking and monitoring. Um, we have, for students that are in RSGA this year and were supported by partners last year, we have two years of dosing, that's the amount of service hours they have. We're also tracking for students that are new, students that are just being supported by partners beginning this current year. And so we. And so we will be able to track long-term outcomes. We are also tracking and trying to see in the short term for continuous improvement. Process, as Ms. Ledesma mentioned, we're not only having conversations about what's working well in the way of leadership, but we're starting to take peeks into attendance and discipline and referrals to see if we're already seeing some impacts in the short term. That work is ongoing and we talk about that quarterly.
I guess what is really not clear, um, here are the strategies, um, what's not clear for me is like, how is that measured with a partner? So if the strategy is this and the partner is supposed to implement this strategy, like how do you measure that impact? Was more so my original intent, but for the sake of time, um, uh, it was, for the record, um, misinterpreted, um, again, of what my complaint was. But for the sake of time, let's just move on and.
Additional, yeah. Additional questions from the board? Okay. Um, the board will now vote on the appeal of superintendent's step one decision for complaint two zero two three dash zero four. While in favor of affirming the superintendent's step one decision that Portland Public Schools does report on the outcomes listed in the res j partnership contracts. So let me read that again. Affirming the superintendent's step one decision that Portland Public Schools does report on the outcomes listed in the res j partnership contracts. Please indicate by saying yes. Yes?
Yeah.
Yes.
I'll oppose, please indicate by saying no.
I'm gonna say no because I think what we're, are, I'm trying to make a connection with these reported outcomes with our board goals and even taking, considering which our board goal was before I got them. And I, for me, I just can't see a straight connection to that. Um, so that's what I said.
So the motion, the motion fails, uh, uh, on a vote of three to two. Would anyone like to make another motion? Because at this point, the, the complaint will be unresolved because there is no, there is no resolution at this point. We only have five members willing to, we have not had before.
I mean.
Yeah, sorry, Director Constance, like, yeah, go ahead.
Well, just to Gary's point, I mean, with regard to our board goals, I think part of what might be happening here is that Dr. Adams is saying that we are, your office is getting reports on each of these metrics that are the expectations of our res j partners and you're going over that data with them on a quarterly basis. We're not seeing that necessarily. So that might be a little bit of the disconnect as far as the connection with our board goals. Because I, I haven't seen all this data and maybe it is publicly available somewhere that I just haven't taken the time to access. But you're, you are the administrator basically of, from a research and assessment perspective of the, the effectiveness of these investments and of these contracts. And you're saying in your staff report that we are getting data back on these metrics, which makes me feel it's incumbent upon me to affirm this decision because we do in fact have the data that's looking for it. This is a very different question than are we getting student outcomes data? Are we, are we as a board getting the data that we need to know whether these investments are making a difference for our kids? That's the question that I really want answered and that I really want to be able to answer. But that's not the question that we're being asked here. So that's why I have to vote yes because the evidence is clear that yes, we are receiving this data, but, you know.
I was gonna say something very similar. I, I, I'm a little frustrated, you know, you know, Director Hollins just wanted to be directed because the, the question you're asking is a really good question. It's also not the question that's before today's complaint. But that said, we're adjourned. Um, this complaint will be held over.
Does anybody want to vote differently?
Somebody needs to make another motion and I think since that motion failed, it would have to be someone on the, well, it would have to be someone on the non-huellen side, I'm getting my, that was responsible. So Director Hollins or Director Brumowitz could raise another motion, but we're done and we'll have to wait for our other two members to join us for.
Yeah. I mean, but this is, this is the problem.
I know, I just, we gotta move on. So does anyone make a motion? These two of you are the only ones who can. All right now, we're adjourned.
This is the problem we're gonna finalize, the outcomes.
We're adjourned. Um, we're out. What, what room are we in?